So I wanted to really highlight our safety heroes and she-heroes. This is the second quarter and you can see that it's quite smooth, folks. That have wonderful years of safety. And then for every year that they are safe, we give them a hundred dollars per year to add up. So Russell Thaing is one of our supervisors, as is Ray Perry over on the right. And they brought us eight years, Ray has four, this is for life duty. So they have to get one more year to reach their award than our equipment operators' frontline container specialist. So we also have Chuck Barham Hall, who was our 2023 National Wating Recycling Driver of the Year. He had five years. Mike Edwards is one of our content folks who dealt with repairing and recycling cans. Five years for him. Don Woodruff, Woody, has three years with $300. And Michelle Han has three years as well. And Chris, Chris North, and Fred Rachecko, all with three years. Thank them for the safety and make sure they're recognized.
That's terrific.
Yeah.
Lot of help. Thank you.
You bet. And then just customer service and participation in community events. I'm a pro believer that presence is everything so that people understand who we are and what we do for them. And so we had community events. It was, well, clean up was May 18th. Magnet City Open House was June 3rd. And Thursday Night Out Against Crime was June 8th. And then we had the Chairman, Fort Herman Days that we had a second grade. And then this coming weekend, we have the Taylor's Day for ourselves. So any opportunity we can provide for education and then support for our community to do what I do.
Cam, what is the image up there of all those tables? Is that something you got picked up and crushed or?
Oh, so that's, so that says current, that they turned library.
Right.
So I believe that that is wood partitions for the artwork that they have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yes.
Oh, got me.
Yeah.
I think it's. Okay.
Yeah, take a minute. And then if you'll jump to the next page, I want to make sure that we recognize employee and highlight here. So on top of the order, John Whitaker, who is here with us today. He's an equipment operator, has been with us for 25 years in May. And he is coming up to retire in July. And so we have our resolution to adopt once we get done with this report. This is what we did with Pam's average last month. And thankful that John is able to be here. He was our very first National Wating Recycling Driver of the Year back in 2011. It was under a different name at that time, the Environmental Industries Association, EIA. He was our very first. And since then, we've had numerous winners of this award. He has been the master of operating our district equipment. The past 10 years, he's been operating the frontload trucks and travels 150 to 200 miles every day. And servicing all of the residents in the canyons and then also the facilities around the valley. Lori Turek, we had a graduation ceremony for her, had the garbage person day last Thursday. And the team set it up so great. She had a cap and didn't have a gown, but she had her safety shirt on and came up and received her diploma for graduating. She's our very first apprentice to complete program. Except for me, she is phenomenal. Sorry, I'm out. What a great job. Kevin Underer was promoted from equipment operator to quality assurance inspector. He, as you may recall, last month, I talked about James Pilphy, who was promoted from a QAI position, which opened up the slot for an equipment operator. And Kevin was selected as the competitive candidate. So, and then also we have Ken Fear to return to the scrap this season and was recently promoted to full-time equipment operator. And Ken is the son of a former veteran container driver that works for us. Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, word of mouth, family, sometimes a direct way to get good employees in. So just want to say congratulations to all of these folks and make sure that we recognize them. A very short, sweet general manager's report. There's no question. Any questions?
That's awesome. 3.2 Resolution 4430, recognizing John Whitaker. John?
Stand up.
I'm on my way.
Yeah. John doesn't need, these are, doesn't his manager name, which you know, is our manager. So I think it'd be great to stand with him and support you.
Definitely.
Yeah.
And you deserve this, the part of the year, and you helped create, you know, the big city. I can't find why, our days, the family and friends, we would be here to thank you for the charity. So we just want a resolution of making me, I think, for the truck, the appreciation.
Sorry, we got Jane, the revolution. Equipment operator.
Whereas what that front wage recycling district formerly known as Salt Lake County District Number One, was established in 1977 by Salt Lake County, reading about that front wage recycling district. Whereas of the 14th, in 2009, Salt Lake County created the district called Word. And then whereas on March 16th, when we come into the county council, recognizing this book, where the truck, these were granted full government for the, to the state down here in August. Whereas John Whitaker was hired as an equipment operator in May, May, 1999.
Yeah.
And whereas this city is public service, the first year, equipment operator with the national credit, helping to hire an equipment driver of the year. And whereas this humble district and residence, they should be in 68,000. And whereas this honorable equipment operator is retiring, and this year, we should put a great appreciation of John Whitaker for his years of service.
And you.
Therefore, it is authorized for John Whitaker to retire. We apply, we applaud all of your, John, since this.
Well done.
That's awesome. Yeah, well done. Do you have any words that you?
It's been, it's been quite an adventure here. Quite an adventure. Yeah, we love to talk to people and a lot of people. You know, the fire department comes up, say, John, what are you doing? It's all my turn.
You're welcome. You're famous.
Yeah, there's big colored candles coming out, telling me to dress up. Go get some heat, brother, going, please. He's been good by all this and for the time. Eight minutes.
Yeah, we're gonna get to you.
Just kind of move on.
Yeah.
If you. You'll spend time with Frank, with great grandkids. And two boys. You know? It's been pretty normal.
Well deserved, and I want to thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. You are a true public servant. And you do your job, dedicated to the team, to our organization, to the community. And you don't, don't ask for anything extra. You come in, you have a great attitude, it's just put your hand down if you work.
My grandfather, my grandfather, when the young kid helped said, did your work at home, be home at home. Well, they were, we were all, we were just talking.
Good advice.
Yeah.
It's a little bit of a.
Yeah, we're not a lot of people. Very positive, keep your life is, yeah. Wonderful care.
Good.
It's gonna be hard to leave, but I gotta move on.
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, may I have just another moment?
Absolutely.
So we have gone retiring, but we have a new employee that's joining our, well, equipment operators who have joined us that are in training right now. But we do have Lori McAllister, who's back here. She's our new payroll technician, who is, Pam's back with us. Welcome you. They're already diving in, learning our database systems and payroll. So thank you as well as everything else. Thank you very much. All right.
Need anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Item 3.3, the 2025 and future financial, the cash projections and convenience scenarios. Cam?
Okay, so in looking at, we're regarding financial positions. And then some of these, this first slide is updated just slightly as of yesterday with the 2022 actual. I sent this out, just trying to make sure I got the information out to you. So I updated a couple of things that will be in, on screen. If you're on a call, you may not have this information, but we'll try to run through it. The main thing that's changed in that first slide is just the 2022 actual. And just one of the things to note there is that we expanded 94% of that 2022 budget. And then in looking at cash projections, we thought we were safe to, you know, we have previously had 98% cash project or expenditures for a budget. And we thought we were safe to ratchet down the cash projections of 94% going forward. And unfortunately, the timing of that was not great. But, you know, when you go by history, that's what we did. And so for that, we actually extended 96%, about a million dollars more above, if that makes sense. So just to run through the estimate that we gave you last October for the expenditures in 2023 is right up there, what you see. So I did it, what we reported in 2023, and then the estimate for last year, and then the estimate going forward projected for '24, if that makes sense. So, and then we have the actual for '23. And we did, as you may recall, we had a budget adjustment that we needed to make last year because we needed, we projected we needed another $600,000, $300,000 going into maintenance additional, and then $300,000 more going into recycling. So we, we came out with the actuals of '23, right there, what you see. And then, as you may recall, we were not able to replace that little truck for a couple of years, which saved us some cash, but drove out those maintenance costs. We now know that the ideal time to replace the truck is right about seven years. We don't really want to keep it any longer than that. So we're still paying a little bit more. We anticipate being able to do that with the 12 size that we have ordered, have ordered. We will receive 10 for sure this year. And then we're anticipating to be carryover, probably four of those diesel trucks to carry over for next year's purchase. So you will see the adjusted 2024 budget is a little, as of June, is a little different than what we had in October, last October. So the bottom line is that we operate on cash. We don't accept any cash. We're an enterprise fund. We have no debt currently, which is one of the things I've been proud of. So I wanted to point out that getting into any kind of a negative cash balance is not a good thing for us. We want to pay our bills. So I thought that this would be important to get before you right now so that we can talk this out and we can look at this scenario and talk about what we need to do. And then the purpose is also so that I can get the word out to community of what discussions are happening as part of the fee increase for me. So the biggest cost factors that we have are cost drivers in the table below that you can see. That has not changed from what was sent out to you. And you can see it's dumping fees at the landfill transfer station. Maintenance, of course, has gone up. But dumping fees over the past four years is almost $300,000. Maintenance fees, and that is, is part of the agency truck. It's also part of the shop, increasing their hourly rate by $8 and a 50 each year in 2022, '03, and '04. And then the fuel and maintenance has gone up over $500,000. Recycling, $500,000, although that has come down as far as the fees that we pay our vendors. Wages and overtime has gone up. And as we are short-staffed, as you can imagine, that does go up. We have drivers that come in on their day off, there are four teams. So there's some drivers that want to come in and we're thankful that they will. That will slowly come down as far as managing scrap. The scrap over time might go up, so labor, but it's our administrative and managing that program that has come down with the reservation system online. Truck purchase price has gone up over $100,000 over the past four years, that 4.9 million. So just so you can put that in perspective, that's a $5 per ton to launch increase of car. Looking at the, any questions on that before I move along?
So the dumping fees, that's imposed by the county?
County.
So that's them increasing their fees then?
Correct, county and then Transjordan.
And Transjordan.
Yeah, Transjordan is $2 per ton every year since 2020, I believe, 2019, actually. Every year, $2 per ton.
And the increase for wages and overtime, obviously overtime self-explanatory with the wages, is that what we as a board vote on for cola and merit? So that increases what we're voting on?
That is correct. And then you also have a pay-for-work experience model that was adopted in 2001. And it started with a frontline where we pay for years of experience.
Yeah.
They come in, so they move into that range.
Yeah.
If that helps.
And I'm thinking.
We also have a, if you know about our salary.
Oh, that, we're hard.
We hire persons to make sure Valerie stays in line.
Market. Yeah.
There's no more questions on that page. We can move along. And I know that this might be a tough time to talk about increasing fees because I understand that many municipalities are having to increase taxes or implement new fees, especially to five metropolitan cities that are a town or a city. But the reality is that we do need to raise rates to 2025, or at least I'm going to request that we do to sustain a lot of pick-up garbage.
When's the last time we had a fee increase?
Thank you, 2023. And we raised it $2.50 at that time. And then, oh, if you jump back for anything, sorry.
And they paid kind of like 40 before that.
Five, five years. We waited five, five years because we thought with the cash projection and being under-expended, we would be okay to wait five years. But it turns out, I mean, hindsight is probably 2020, right? If we could go back and do a fee increase in 2022, which was projected previously, ideal. But we waited the five years and we also knew that the $2.50 could be too low. And sure enough, you know, so hindsight is what it is. We did raise it $2.50 in 2023. And then, as you can see, we did have a benefit from that and then not purchasing the truck. Also, we had that bottom line cash year end. In 2023, the actual was we had $10,000 year-end cash. Adjusted, looking in from, you know, January to the end of the year, we have adjusted to '24 to $5,000 cash. And then going forward in '25, we're in a negative. Now, we could under-expend this year. We could be below that 98% by giving expenditure. But I don't want to ratchet that down. If we come out and we expend 97% this year, that basically would give us another $500,000 of cash that year end. So we would not be in a negative, however, it could be strapped to purchase trucks and so forth the following.
Is that $2.50 on green, garbage, glass? Is it a $2.50 increase on everything? Or is it just on specific pickups?
And they, so what we call the basic service. So garbage and recycling weekly. And then we have the scrap that's all part of that, $19.50 is what we pay right now as residents in the district. $19.50 includes that basic service of weekly garbage, weekly recycling, scrap, Christmas tree, the, and then the glass site. So curbside glass is a separate fee, curbside green is a separate fee. And then, once we get into the fee comparison, we'll show you that I am looking at increasing the green waste collection fee as well. Yeah, you bet. Okay. Thank you for asking.
Oh, just a clarification for those that may be a little bit newer. There was $10,000 in the bank because there was a delay in giving those trucks.
The 10 million?
Or, yeah, 10 million.
Yeah.
And so you'll see that draw, those of you that are looking at that, that cash balance drop so quickly and significantly because we're ready to plan to get trucks.
Yeah. Yeah. The double-edged sword, not to give them, and a double-edged sword to give them. We don't have enough cash. We do, I don't want to panic anybody. We do have enough cash to bear it right now. And by year end, I anticipate in '25, we would have enough cash. I just, as a manager of this organization, feel comfortable we had more cash as we go forward so that we don't, anyway.
Can I add one more question?
Yeah, no, I'm glad you're asked.
So the maintenance costs for buying new trucks, do you foresee that going down significantly? And we're kind of in the 3, 3, 3, 3 and 1/2 to 4 range right now. Do you see that going down to, you know, that going to be some significant cost savings for us? Or do you think it'll maintain?
I think it will. If we can sustain it, I think that would be a win.
Okay.
Because I think that Salt Lake County completed two week contracts with our vendor for maintenance. And then our asset manager, Andy Keen, has done some informal shopping out there to see what we would be charged if we went out for our, because we thought we'd want one to see. But informally, we can already see that Salt Lake County fleet is cheaper per hour. So then they rate to them their right here.
And their right here, yeah.
Yeah, you don't have to transport to that state.
Yeah, okay.
So if we could sustain that amount, you know, going forward of 4.7 million, that would be great. Even as we absorb the increased cost that we're going to get from the shop, if that makes sense. Yeah, well, that would be a win. Yeah, but do you mind the maintenance cost leveling off? You know, once you get rid of those older trucks and they're not out there and they're breaking down and that are costing more, then I think that would help offset.
The only reason I ask, I think it's a great investment for these new trucks. We're not having $1.2 million increases over a four-year span. I mean, you'd hope that that's a positive effect at least, so.
Yeah.
Amen.
We didn't really see, it didn't seem like we really saw a huge spike in maintenance because of the age of the truck. I'm sure that in a couple, four maybe, ago, we, as I said, it wasn't huge. It was more of the cost of supplies and possibly where, or those, those types of things part for killing us, but in payments in every industry.
True.
Didn't seem like there was a huge spike just because of the age, although they are aging.
Yeah, it actually, there was. At year eight, because there's certain points in time that we replace a more extensive part. So the capacity, the door, things like that, the arm, an arm's $10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there are times, points in time, that we did see an increase.
Yeah, and that was mostly because our ability to reset my truck went right.
Okay.
And that would be another issue we'll have too, because now we're going to get a bunch of trucks. Now we're behind on cycleless trucks. See, we're not getting our average amount of trucks coming in every year. So then we're going to have a whole bunch that are going to age at the same time.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And so that's the long-term viewpoint. And then we get into this, I am going to ask that I, well, I don't need direction, but I want to make sure you understand what my intent is, is I want to try to secure financial advisor to come in and help us plan and look at long-range planning to deal with these kinds of challenges.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I think that that is something that I apologize that I've done sooner. Maybe should have done it in '22 when the pandemic hit. However, here we are, and that is something that I want to do.
Sure I do.
Okay, all right. We'll move on to then the next page, and that is the fee scenarios. And, you know, I started out big, I understand that, with a $5.50. Sorry, I have additional pages today. I don't, we can't, excuse me, because this is letting here.
Is he a candidate?
So the $5.50 from all of us, we raised us up to $25, towards $19.50. As you can see, the revenue benefit for that, and then the cash balance is going forward. This is all projection. Let me start with understanding that the board discussed year-end cash balance and what percentage of the cash, looking at the operation, what percentage, you know, the board felt comfortable with. And at that time, they said a year-end, a desired year-end cash, 20% would be what we desire. I felt comfortable with that. And then looking at a fee increase once we get to the 5%. So none of these scenarios get us to the 20% year-end. So considerations, once we get there, would be, do you want to change the quality? But just to state that that's why that percentage is there, and that's why I want to follow that out. So year-end cash balances are $25 a month. You can see those cash balances going forward as projected. Again, we don't want to drop too low because we do need to operate and want to purchase trucks. Then going down to $4.50 a month takes us to $24 for all to month. And you can see the cash balance is going forward there. And then these are all to sustain the current service level. Keeping weekly recycling, garbage, of course, will be mandated, it has to be weekly. It's a health code. And then the scrap, kind of the give, and leaf, and Christmas tree, and then for the trailer metal is support that, a reduced fee in that. And to go to the next one, of course, is $3.50. I want to make sure I gave you some scenarios. This $3.50, you know, we're, we're. Yeah, so you can see why I wanted to make sure I gave you some different scenarios. I did understand the $5.50 as well, but again, I'm looking at our business and trying to sustain over the long haul. You'll see the considerations, and I did add to this box, so as I mentioned, the year-end cash balance quality right now, 20% year-end. You want to change that quality. And then I added the thought of moving from quarterly billing to monthly billing. Now, we've always looked at the cost to do that. There is a decrease of anywhere from $600,000 to $700,000 a year for increased homeowners mailing. We need to add administrative staff and customer service staff. This one has not been looked in closely. So I wanted to list it though, so that you understand that I'm looking at every opportunity. The benefit of that is that we would increase our year. Well, when we moved to quarterly billing, there was four months of path that moved into a couch receiver. So it hits the next year as it charges for it. However, the cash year-end, $4 million never hits, if that makes sense. So I want to thank Matt Ferguson, our controllers, for driving in and looking at a quick analysis of this. And estimated, we have $2.7 million more cash at year end. Because we would not count December, because that would be in the following year. So we build a year that rears, right? So anyway, that's what that second bullet is all about. Any questions on that? Okay. Looking at a possible lease on our trucks. I had a brief conversation with Zion Banking. They are our current vendor for our banking services. So I felt comfortable having a conversation about, you know, I still don't want to overshadow the procurement, but I have this scenario of asking, you know, what would they do? And how would they let, Matt responding for our business? They basically said, no, we would do a lease. And then they asked me to show some figures, but I didn't want to do that before I talked to you and to make sure we're legal that I would be okay with them in that scenarios. But we'll talk through that later, see if I need to do that, the banking, bank organization. So that's something that I'm looking at, that would basically prolong the cash. We would still have to, you know, they would pay for the, is the trucks? We would lease the old net, and then they said they do a name improvement. I don't know what that would be because I haven't gotten to the depth, the depth of those conversations. I'm looking at every part of the movie. If we move to bi-weekly recycling, would that be something that our residents would want? Or would they be willing to pay the fee, you know, to keep the weekly? So that, what would be the cost reduction there? And one of the things to note, that if we did go to bi-weekly recycling, the commodity that's currently in the recycling can is going to move to garbage can. I already know that those lots that are taking up space that go into the black can. And so what would garbage collection look like at that point? We don't know for sure what the operation of bathing would be because you're switching from one can to the other.
Yeah, I'm curious about how full our blue cans are every day. Because my blue can, I often tend to set out every other. Cause my blue can, I often tend to set out every other week. Not full every week. Do they have that? Do, do they have a bill for how full the cans are every week?
Mine's a finer can.
How big?
But I got young kids, we're going to Costco.
There you go.
So we got big, you know, diaper box.
Yeah, yeah.
All that stuff, so, yeah.
I'm curious.
I mean, it already gets so cold at the point that we're having to put some in.
And then we get one of the drivers.
Yeah.
Or the neighbors.
Or the neighbors. That, no, that happens the, the most often is the neighbors and theirs is full. It's usually full.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's previously with the set out rate, so how often did the residents put out their can? It was in the seventies percent five. I believe that's still running.
A little bit higher.
Little bit higher now.
I gotta stop shopping on Amazon.
Yes, we, we, uh, we put the can out, but it's usually a full. You know, it, I just put it out, it's habit.
It, it varies honestly. I know in my neighborhood, our can is full and we will poach our neighbor's can.
Hmm.
Um, and they, they have room, so I think it does vary. Um, I think if you as a board were, were interested in releasing bi-weekly, I, I would want to survey our residents. And because if it's going to save a dollar fifty per month, if they really want to reduce that, would they be willing to pay that extra dollar fifty? I have.
Yeah, in the past, it's always been enough to keep it coming. I have a lot of compartments every other week, remember which we each week. Yeah.
We're going to be. There'd be many.
For sure. Go ahead, it says.
Oh, I was gonna say, I would be interested in knowing people's thoughts on that. If they would be willing to take a, you know, a fee cut, if they would did it bi-weekly or if they would. I don't know, I just, because I feel like sometimes we fill our can, but not always. And it, it seems like, I, I don't know if there's a way to do, you can opt in to one or the other? Or if that doesn't reduce the costs as much as we would need?
Yeah, it's a good question. Uh, first off, I think we can definitely survey the residents and try to get some feedback from them. I do know that last year we surveyed to say, um, you know, do you still support weekly recycling even with increased cost? But we did not include a dollar amount in there. Ninety-five percent of the residents supported weekly. Uh, years prior, uh, we surveyed residents and we did have a dollar amount in there before. But there were over two thirds in every municipality that wanted to keep weekly. Uh, the Northwest was a little different. They were slightly lower than the two thirds. But the board went district wide, keep it. Um, you know, there could be varying rates for municipalities. We've never done that before. But I think these are unique times and we need to take everything into consideration. Operationally, it would be a challenge, but we can do it. She can have different fee structures for, for municipal companies. Do a different fee structure for the town right now. So.
That is good to know that. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
And then, uh, you asked about the, can you opt in? So to answer that question, uh, residents can't opt out of the recycling program, but we do not reduce the fee. Uh, the other thing to consider is that it couldn't be an opt-in per household and then we, uh, we just have to take the can away. But it could be an opt-in, I only want it every other week. We would have to do it by city, by city. Uh, because we have to go. Yeah, we're still going past the, we have to do it city by city, um, to have every other. And, and again, it's the, uh, either district wide or if you want to look at having a different service level for different municipalities.
No, that makes sense. That makes sense. I'm glad to know that you have that, that data from previous years, though. That's helpful.
Yeah.
Lot of good data here. Lot of good scenarios that have already been tried and thought out and out through the process. Do you remember off the top of your head, I had, um, how far in the red are we on recycling?
Just know what you mean by red. We're within budget.
We're within budget. How much of the cost? I can see here that our projected costs are for these top. And the reason why I'm asking is because there have been some in my community that feel like, hey, is people really want recycling? Could they just pay for the recycling a hundred percent rather than our, this is our garbage fee? If you want recycling, this is the exact cost of recycling fee. Does that make sense?
Yeah, having two separate fees. So there are some municipalities that are not in the district that do have separate fees. Once the garbage truck will recycle, that could be another consideration we could add to this list. As if you wanted to, and what could that be? You know, roughly off the top of my head, the last program cost analysis I received um, showed garbage right around twelve million, which is twelve dollars per home per month. And then recycling was seven or eight, seven to eight dollars per home per month. But that's just operations I need to go back and look at. We plug in administrative and everything else, the old. What would that actually be? If that's something you would like to entertain, I could bring back some themes and scenarios related to that. You don't have to decide that today, but if you want to give me that direction, go back, look at that, bring something back from. I am going to ask to meet in July and here's yours. I need more help and supportive than direction and I want to bring things back to you in July. Because anytime we have a decrease, we need to start the, uh, show on the road, so as they can go out to each municipality and talk about why. And in, in all honesty, that's almost like having fourteen different.
Yeah, very, yes.
And trying to get the word out. One of the municipalities, Kern Central, the mayor, Kelly Bush, asked, you know, could we put something in the mailer to say this is what we need to do and the why, um, before we get to this increase? And certainly we can take that into consideration. That would be an additional cost that we certainly could consider. Uh, and we'll be willing to do that.
Yeah. Yes, you did.
Okay.
And I would, I'd love to see those numbers.
Okay.
Break that out between the garbage and the recycling.
Okay. All right, and then the other, um, consideration. Uh, and I know we've talked about this before and we do have scrap on the agenda coming up, but a possible fee for that, help off that cost. Not a popular topic, so it is something to put into the consideration. Uh, it would be basically estimated at a dollar twenty per month or some fee. So the scrap cost is, you'll see that when we get there, is projected to be one point two million dollars this year. And understanding that's sixty containers a day. Of course, that goes up if we, if we're able to do, because we have more labor available to us. Think I have my direction to come back with program cost to do a separate fee for, uh, for everybody recycling now. If you went, I did add a page and you have it on paper there. And, uh, tested, you may not be able to see this since you're on the phone. But I did do a fee comparison yesterday to look at and I want to thank remaining plans, uh, for going out on the web internet and finding out who's raising their rates all frequently and where do they fall? So Salt Lake City, the notes has had, um, about a twelve dollar per home per month increase for the past three years of the year. And so they are now up to thirty-three twenty. And that's for the ninety gallon heads. Keep in mind, they have a fee structure that they lower their rates for smaller garbage can. Um, but we do, and then also they have green waste included. So they do weekly, they're green waste as well. That all includes that they're, they're, or their fee. Uh, I just did a scenario to say where would we fall? Uh, whether we go to the, the twenty-three dollars a month, twenty-four, twenty-five? You can see where to fall rather than be, um, Salt Lake City. Um, and then Murray would be next after that. So the, the other folks that have increased their fee, again, that have proposed for what's worth, I don't want anybody to, you know, take that out there, but Bluffdale, they increased two dollars per home per month at seventeen seventy-five. They also, uh, have a curbside green that they have a separate fee, so they increased that. I am proposing that we increase the, um, the green waste at least a dollar. I mean, that's the initial estimate I have. I think that's a little bit higher once I can get more into those programs. Uh, and then just going down South Salt Lake City rate, there's two dollars per month. One thing to note with them is they pay no dumping fee. Their, the transfer station that is out there is right there in their city. So that was part of the agreement with Salt Lake County. You can have a municipality in our city, but we don't want to pay dumping fees. And then their residents get to go there and they can help the monster deliver bulk weight on the Saturday. Uh, and then the other city that raised three dollars per home per month was River City with thirteen dollars. So I wanted to make sure we saw those most reasons. And I know that we're not the only ones feeling this increased, uh, cost inflation.
I have another annoying question and, excuse me, I understand the problematic situation of having to go and have fourteen public care in Valentine. But I wonder, uh, if, if we treat it at more like just this slight increase, we did do it for five years. Did it, maybe we'd have to look at it more like we do a small increase every year or every other year rather than large increase just go a few years, large increase just go a few years. Wonder if it would be easier on the rest of us to accept just doing a small, you know, a two dollar fifty cent increase this year and in two years, we do another two fifty one thousand plus.
So we did that kind of analysis years ago when Stuart Palmer, the former controller at that time, and he did, uh, smaller increments going forward. With the time value of money, the larger the increase, the longer, the longer you're going to carry your cash. If you have a small increase, it doesn't get you there, time value of money. But if you would like, you can totally put that scenario together.
And I think the one thing that I'd love to know is cutting off, you, you, these numbers that you're giving us, I'd love to better understand, maybe you have it here. How far out, how much time that buys us? If that makes sense.
Can you jump back to?
And maybe you've already got it here. I see you've got twenty-seven, twenty-nine.
Yeah.
But just, hey, if you're doing this, we're not going to need a fee increase for five years or three years or.
So look at the bottom of each of those, uh, the increased scenario, the percentage of thirteen, thirteen, ten, two.
Five fifty is probably twenty-eight.
That doesn't even get us to the twenty percent then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it would get us to twenty twenty right now. And then again, if we have under expense from the projected ninety-eight percent of what we have projected, so for every percent that we would be under would be a truck and a half. So it's just over five hundred thousand dollars of, of additional cash that we would have. If we were under expense in what we projected ninety-eight, I hope that.
Yeah.
The, the other thing, I guess I questioned a little bit about the time value of money in this scenario, uh, I understand it for sure, like I'm buying trucks because, you know, whether they're going to be like three years from now. Um, like at, at, at a municipality level, it's like if we're having to build a new road, it's better for us to bond now and pay today's dollar and then pay more time and pay what it's going to be in three years from now. Those kind of scenarios. But I wonder how that really affects us here with that value? Does that, does that make sense? Because salaries are just going to continue to increase. So if you're saying who fills up a lot of money now? I just struggle a little bit with that concept. Other than it's, it's hard for us, I think.
Yeah, and that's what we rely on, right? And the biggest cost too is as far as capital, hard as a cycle truck. Front wheels are even cheaper, rear wheels, bootless, cheaper. Flyable truck, and I anticipate it will go up. With those truck purchases, um, Andy King and they, it, it, they, it went through these and I want to thank them. Um, but they included at least a three percent price increase every year. As you know, we experienced a lot higher than that over the past couple of years. In fact, we couldn't give them because the vendors went out and went ahead bitter and which wasn't enough. We tried, we adjusted our budget, but they still went out and got more. Um, but, you know, so contractually, that's not very, you know, very nice or lawfully. But, you know, it would take us more time to fight that than to just go with it and do the best we could to adjust. So I anticipate those truck purchases will go up. Would it be three percent? Would it be five percent? Ten percent? You don't know because we, we lock into a contract, but again, we know we can experience that that could change, if that makes sense.
Totally makes sense. So I support design spacing, I guess, is my point, because maybe that locks into that value of money and we pay for it over a longer period of time rather than just have all the cash upfront now. And then, and then we do increases to pay for the, for the bond or.
Believe me.
Yeah.
Okay, definitely we'll check.
Anyway, I'd be really interested to see what they say on that, if that gives us a longer value for money, rather than just having to gather a lot of cash now and carry.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and for the third time, we would incur debt, which I'm not saying we should have turned that soon. That would be new, so I want to make sure that I, I understand clearly how to manage that.
And what the cost is.
Yeah, what the cost, yeah.
I think you ought to go ahead and run the numbers with some of the veins in it. And, um, see what they come up with. Your split rate. We might. We might not always be in this nightmare. It's always fun if prices go up, really takes a long, long, long time for them to ever come down, I understand that. But I wonder if this supply chain will balance out or if it's continuing to do this back to a pandemic. Not have a crystal ball to name.
Right?
Yeah, it, it's a, it's a, they're not apples to apples, but we, we ended up transitioning all of our, we probably had a hundred percent lease. Um, and part of the reason why is our maintenance costs are zero dollars. Because now I don't, again, not knowing the, uh, trash pickup world. Um, you know, we, we stay basically within, within warranty. And as soon as that warranty is done, we actually transition them out and sell them to municipalities all across the Western United States. And this is cop, you know, police vehicles down to public works, everything under the sun. And, you know, our maintenance costs are piercing. We were dealing with these increases and it is now zero dollars. Um, and so that's something that it's, it's been, not only a cost saving, but it's been a pretty significant retention and morale boost for folks.
Nice.
Because they're dealing with newer vehicles and it's constant. Instead of, you know, the new guy, give him the one with the rope that's holding the wheel on, you know? So, and, and I don't know, that analysis would need to be done here, but it's something that we decided municipality has been a big toddler for us, so.
Yeah, when I instructed Zion, they didn't say that they are working with cities in our, that are in our district. Uh, that they, you know, your cities could be guarded, used to that.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Definitely need forward that. There's no more question.
Our favorite topic, our favorite topic. Right?
Oh, oh, um.
Oh, next.
Oh, to confirm, sorry, to confirm, thank you. Or reschedule the July twenty-second. Uh, we would need a forum. But, well, we, it's hard to know if we need something to be voted on at that time, but the more people we can have at the July meeting, the better. So I think our forum would be eight.
When is it?
July twenty-second.
Twenty-second Monday.
If we need to reschedule, we can.
I think I can.
Yeah, it's already on the calendar, it's published. Vendo, Omero Pinyon, you cannot be there. And I believe it was Emily or Omero Gray. He also.
That's right, I cannot be there that day.
Any others that are unable to attend in July? Looks like we might have a form.
I think Tom, uh, it's too many. Or remember, just the Syrah did log on, okay.
Some of you are muted, so if you're saying you can't make it, make sure that you're unmuted and, and we'll get that down. Okay, I think we should have a forum.
Right on.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. Um, better now to deal with it than putting it off. Important. All right, two point four, the staff, uh, we select to confirm Monday, we read it down. And three point five, love this, scrap for the day, or the scrap program. Uh, Cam has had a lot of questions about scrap program and we, I felt like it was a good idea to go through a little bit of the history of the scrap program. And why it has evolved into what it is today, perhaps that led to some of the questions. I know when I came on board, Scrap was just, I did the unknown. I did not know it. I did not know what that program is. And so she's going to cover that and I'm grateful that you included these amazing photographs. It's a manliness of the graphic.
Trust me that these are just two of many.
Not many.
Of the traditional or former program, free dis, if you would, that we provided with containers in the street. Um, roughly a hundred and twenty-four containers, as you know, I'll. Um roughly a hundred and twenty four containers, as you know, I'll sure can go through the background and history. And then I'm gonna ask Renee to cover some of the stats because I might be a little uh low on fuel at that point. And um and then she can jump in. So I'll cover the the opening and the introduction. So the background is that we needed eight, at least eighteen T D L drivers for the previous program to deliver a hundred and twenty four containers in the street. We also needed six gravel crew uh to help to clean up the mess and sort the the cans. We ran two rear loaders as well because we would have to chop off that stuff on on the top and sometimes it was done manually labor. There were times that we'd get skids there's um these little mob cats that go around and pick up the heavy stuff uh to try to prevent injuries. And and then we had the one rear loader getting the bulk and one rear loader getting green. We used to do that. Rather than just put it out the curb and we go around and pick it up. Obviously, those were the good old days. And we had staff, we had issues starting in twenty eighteen, nineteen was the big one where we only had thirteen of them, an average thirteen T D L drivers. We had the full, full time staff over. Um so the bottom line is we also had driver vacancies on full time staff. So it was all hands on deck in twenty nineteen. Um looking at those, that honestly was a crisis. And then looking at that si- situation uh in twenty twenty, um I wanted to change the way we ran that program anyway. We approached the board in twenty seventeen, I believe, with this possibility of going to reservation where we put it in their driveway. It was not um popular at that time, but in twenty twenty, there was no choice. And so uh I asked, because of the pandemic, cancel the container delivery program uh because of the pandemic and knowing we'd have short staff. We were only able to recruit uh at that time. At the moment that we were looking at launching this program, I think it was eight drivers, if I'm reading correctly, so we needed more time for recruiting, et cetera. So the board asked for an alternative. I came back and we postponed the the start of the twenty twenty program and season. And then we also changed it to the reservation, which basically shifted the workload from the street to the owner, our wonderful manager. Um basically helped to develop the program and then K L Johnson, our customer service manager, has something on the website that people should reserve. Um so moving cut forward, uh we are currently in our fifth year of what we have named scrap, seasonal container reservation program. You can see there's a big difference in those pictures and the ones that you saw previously. Uh this is much more manageable uh and I understand it for many residents, it's been uh confirmed and not you know, kind of don't remember, even though we're in our fifth year of this, they're still remembering the old way and want it back. And I understand. We would not have made this change unless we had to. Uh we put you through it or our staff through it or the residents through it. So these staff that you have before you started in twenty nineteen with the traditional program, moving into the scrap uh all the way to what we have budgeted for this year. Uh currently, we have seven part time seasonal drivers and I believe we recruited a few more, so we may actually get that up to ten. We hope to keep them. Um we do know that we do have an increase of accidents and incidents at the start of this program. And then when we get to drivers in both full time or part time on this program, we can see um some increased incidences. Uh luckily with our new training program, that has decreased quite a bit. Well, thank you for that. Uh you have some financials just below to show the cost. Uh so previously, it was a one point seven million dollar operation. Uh and again, that one point seven twenty nineteen includes three full time drivers going over to help. And then now uh last year, um we have a one point two million and then we're projected about the same coming into twenty twenty four, but so far, three weeks in, that's what we have expended.
Interesting. It's interesting to see over the course of the years, the dumping fees have gone down, meaning the bulk quantity.
Yeah, the tonnage.
Tonnage has gone down.
Yeah, tonnage has gone down because we really were, if you enter, there's no illegal dumping, there's no piled in the street. Um so we don't have to manage the construction folks that drop off whatever or uh you know, rather than the doesn't matter.
So Pam was kind enough to come to our city council meeting this last week and give an update on this. And I shared this experience of, you know, every city has their Facebook community, political pages and all the different, and they become super entertaining. But we had one person that said, hey, you know, my dad has bad health and you know, we, it's nearly impossible for us to go out to the dump. We need this more than you need it. And then there was the, someone can you please cancel so that we can get it? And then it started this whole bite of like, why are you more important than we are? And then there was another post where people were starting to barter a little bit of like, hey, you know, like I'll let you borrow my boat for a month. Now let, you know, let me get your trash or like, how much money do you want for it? And 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 so the demand is high and I I we're not gonna solve this now, but eventually I would hope that we get to a point, and I don't know what the answer is, to where more people have access to it so that it doesn't become this giant frenzy and then if people are fighting over large trash pickups, which seems super trivial. Um but uh you know, there's obviously a lot of residents that were not able to get it. And I know we've talked about do we have people rotate of who who can do the reservation? I don't know the answer, but I I'd hope that the board here would try to find some solutions where it's not so, you know, chaotic.
Every year, every year we try it.
Yeah, last last year, the board spent at least three meetings talking about going through some of the ideas that communities came up with. And I think that's the, is that on the next meeting, surely? Well, this is, oh, this is staff. Do you wanna go through that and I'll get into the.
Yeah, yeah.
Same, come on, go into something that you're gonna make up. And you know, maybe shed some light on, you know, the reservations that people, we are able to accommodate based on the annual for residents in that area, right? Um because there were there were accounts from the I went to last year um when we stand the area and they were like, oh, nobody in our area got a reservation kind of. You know, and it's certain data, I went back and I'm like, it looks like the people back up of your area. So it's, you know, it's all, you know, all the, I think it's a good installation affair, right? It's our residents where they can actually see that. But this right here is showing um last year, here are the number of homes that we actually surveyed per municipality. And then the the columns that I'm voting on are the flat or the ten and eleven over here. So set that total home survey the number of pools in the area that we were able to give down our scrap container to the percentage. And then on top of that, we were able to accommodate on waitlist due to cancellation. Um you know, how many we find out on cancellation. So two year, we had for example, so we service over ten thousand in there. Um a thousand boats were able to.
So it's like that's because it's it looks like there's a thousand twenty eight that requested. But then there's a thousand seven, but then it says waitlist not accommodated, three hundred and seventeen people.
Yeah, because there are twenty one folks that that canceled. And then we have five hundred and fourteen on the waitlist. Three hundred and seventeen of those five hundred and fourteen, we're not able to, we were not able to accommodate. So does that make?
Yeah, but if you look at the number of reservations requested, thousand twenty eight, the difference between a thousand and seven.
Right.
But over here on the right, it's saying that there were two hundred people that were not accommodated for that anyway. The number is so simple.
Yeah, I'm trying to, yeah, maybe you can ever, I think it's a lot to you. Hope you.
Yeah, so the cancellation is different from, because the requests, it comes, it comes with people who made multiple requests too. So we eliminate the duplicate.
Okay.
And that's where the, that's where the cancellation.
Yeah, sometimes we have degreases come in and and they won't be actual homeowner that requested it. It was our venture. We need the permissions from the homeowner to do some liability. So some of those are listed on there that we we have to take them out. And then there's duplicates, just to make, you know, be there, go go in and request it two, three times, you know, because they're afraid they didn't get in. Like, that's where some of those.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I think it's really important to know too. I I do think that it'll be after this year that we analyze it. And I think if we can come up with a system or got this year, it makes you not eligible for next year, you know, so that more people that rotate through people better. But we also offer trailers. So so if you're in bad house and you can't go to the dump, any problem. But there's there's a service that's available and it's cheaper than if you just call it locally local and have it ringing up. So that means that we try to compensate with some of the other services, but there's just absolutely no way you're gonna get a hundred percent of the people.
Yeah.
And and while you could, but our five fifty eighty three is gonna look a lot different, right?
I don't know, yeah, yeah.
And our municipality, Taylor's bill will often offer vouchers for these people that didn't get a dumpster or a container and then they have to rent a truck, one of the containers to be brought to their home and through our code enforcement, they will give them a coupon for that or a coupon to go to the dump. So there is.
So that's a cost that Taylor's will city incurs.
We incur that cost.
Okay.
Yeah, we reimburse work for it. Yeah, we do, we do end up cleaning up the town. So you cannot imagine the amount of things that are at our fairgrounds this year. So like now from the tree limbs and branches and appliances. We've limited to certain types of things, but every year we do it. We offer a request to the city to kind of pay for that too. Because it's for health.
For the city collect it and then you're taking it to the landfill or?
The residents bring it to the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
And then the city takes it and hauls it up.
Oh, wow.
And do you also do like the thing numbers for H H W and E W? I I think, I think, and and I think the city does pay for that. Taylor's will city doesn't actually pay not the main pay on the vendors.
Right. We do a one day. And now it's it's high school, the football team, we give a donation to to come and help unload the cars and trucks and then I go to each station. So um we have the fruit store, we have the E W, we have medical waste, the police take them. Yeah, because we did, we have specific things that you can bring to fairgrounds. Like this year, the spring, so it was like free air bracket, tree limbs, all those options. Recycle, like appliances, some types of things that they are gonna be a problem. And it's a little bit hard because there are some people who don't have a vehicle to get it to the fairgrounds. They understand all. But you can't, for tell a program for for each individual to try and cover as much of the masses as possible and offer a voucher here or there, whatever you can, but.
Yeah. Do anything else on that?
Pam? Pam, going back to the scrap issue, how how challenging would it be logistically to track people? So if they had made a reservation, they weren't eligible the following year? I I got a lot of complaints this year about people not being able to. I mean, really, because it fills up in just a matter of minutes. So it um and when I would told them that that was something that they that we were considering, they were very pleased.
Yeah, so we do have those staff um that will cover uh, or remember Gray, appreciate you asking the question because that is um something that we do want to get into today. Uh it, and if it's okay, we'll just run through real quick some of those scenarios and then we can jump right to this in the interest of the time of those stats if if you would.
Thank you.
You bet. So they they were ideas, considerations that the board looked at in twenty twenty three during two, I think, at least three board men uh meeting. Ran through, uh I think it was twelve different scenarios, you'll jump down Renee. The board basically narrowed it down to six options. And they were discussed um every step to each municipal board member to see which were their favorites. Uh and they weighed in and then they also weighed in at a board meeting uh later on. I think it was April like. Yeah, hot three, yeah, so, yeah. And then uh as you can see, going down, they did eliminate number four and eliminated number six, so it narrowed down again. These are the meeting minutes from March meeting. Uh and then board member Gibbons from Holliday City retired and board member Gray is his successor. But he felt that they had this great discussion and he asked to consider a number seven on the scenarios, which would be to keep it the way it is. Um but the concerns would be, you know, if we changed it at that time going into this year, would be a big change for residents. And then the board also looked at, uh looking at scenario number one, which is kind of a hybrid. And what we were just discussing is that there would be some sort of a election at a central site uh along with the container delivery. And so that would be a challenge for us, but we would definitely want to look at something like that, consider it if that's you, what you and the board would like. One of the things to consider is that it may need to be on a weekend because our staff will run in during the week. And what we do for collection events or for special events in cities is it'll be mainly on the weekend, so it's Saturday.
Yeah, I think one thing that we talked about this last week of the year, our city was just really thought of, you know, maybe on the final concluding day of when these, you know, reservation hotwood hikes is gonna be finished and done, that maybe on a single day, a city hall or something. You know, people that missed out, that can bring some items. You're gonna have to figure out how to not have that be too crazy. But as the trucks are at their last kind of stop in our city and then they're transitioning out, that some of these residents are able to take apart and bring the products to a location and then it's done. It's over. But I know that we do that at our city hall for certain recycling, you know, recycled items, batteries. We do certain days of that already. Um, you know, maybe we'll regret even thinking about that idea, but anyway, just a thought.
Maybe you'll just go down through uh the discussions now and and what you all have been looking at is uh scenario number three, where we limit repeat reservations. And so the data that you all have been asking for is right here and Renee worked with our team to gather these stats and Jorge uh put this together. So Renee, I'm gonna turn it back over to you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the uh the chart or the 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 data on the left are in a comparison of reservations from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three and who were repeat. So if you look here, and I'll explain that the color itself here in a moment. Uh but this shows each area and and obviously there are a few areas that are outliers because they have such a small population like four B lane, got two total addresses in that area. And um, you know, so each year from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three, the same two reserved for the the two containers. But if you look at the the larger areas, they're like the height, thirty percent of those that reserved in twenty twenty two, also reserved in twenty twenty three. Um Magna, we have twenty four percent of those that reserved in twenty twenty two, also reserved in twenty twenty three, et cetera. And um you can see that there's a big difference in, you know, the number of addresses that reserved and available that were treated. So then if you look at the information on the right, the the color tells there, that's for the area, the data of the areas that we had information for for this year. So we want compared to last year, for this year compared. Holiday was up twenty nine percent, basically from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four, forty one percent of those residents were repeating re- reservation. Um Bill C, thirty five percent and Murray, forty three percent. There's an increase of twenty five percent each year. So so folks are getting the hang of how the program works now. And so, you know, they're they're waking up at eleven forty fives at night going there. They're just to get there, they're they're working with their neighbors too to to get, share, share. Even a little team, so. We hope they do.
Yeah.
There are a few that, you know, but, I guess.
Some of the options that you have discussed is the limit that and then what would that policy look like and what would you um like? And then understanding that, you know, if we have more staffing, then yeah, we can deliver more than sixty containers a day, obviously, because you you know, over time, you saw that in twenty twenty, you're actually had a pretty good staff with, you know, ten to thirteen. And then dwindled. This year was seven, so.
I think the tricky part would be is, let's say that you do limit the people that reserve this year and we don't then. Sell out, for lack of a better term. Um, you know, some of those people could have. So you look at that thirty percent of heights. You know, we were pretty close to the number, I think, of what was actually done and delivered, but. I hate to underdo what we could have given that makes sense.
At that point, and I appreciate what you're saying, if you're a repeat, you automatically go to the waitlist and to the bottom of the waitlist. Okay.
Yeah, yeah. No, I don't think those that are on that were on the waitlist prior year would be prioritized. We were able to do that.
So waited.
And there should still be another waitlist.
So they're still, okay.
But we do seventy versus sixty, we can pull more off.
That is a good question. I really appreciate that.
I think I think this just makes a lot of sense to to track this and to and to do that. Um, yeah, to me, it just it just seems fair.
Yeah, I agree.
So would it be um the policy that just one year? You just have to not go to the next year and then the following. So for those that reserved in twenty four and got that container. Would not be eligible in twenty five, they'd go to the bottom of the waitlist and then they would have opportunity in twenty twenty three.
Okay.
That makes sense.
And if for some reason in twenty twenty five, they they didn't sell out, then they just get their containers. Everybody else gets priority since they got it the year before.
Now, I might have, I might have missed out, but are we still considering some of the other options? Because I. A hybrid model, I I would mean a.
So Emily. Sorry, Emily. Are you there?
Yeah, sorry. And my my reception was cutting out a little bit, so you might have covered it and I missed it.
No problem. Some of those scenarios, all of those scenarios we went through as a board and we just really narrowed it down to those. Couple of different ideas that we could come up with that we felt like that would work for work heard in the scrap program. And I, and number one, really, we felt like if um. You could have a central place for dumping, but then the cities could be overwhelmed. I think that was one of the considerations. Was that hybrid um just wasn't the best choice. But that doesn't prevent the city from doing something like um pyramid or pyramid does a central pickup. Taylorsville does, we do it on one day. So you can kind of do hybrid number one on your own in the city. And still maintain the scrap program as it's set up right now.
Okay, as well. So that's, okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
That's a great question because, you know, there there's so many scenarios and resources that work heard have. And I I think with allowing allowing residents to be rotated off that, bringing it on at eleven forty five, they have. And then putting them on a waitlist, so we solved a couple of problems there. And then also making it more clear to our residents what work can do and the options. I think answers probably eighty nine percent of the concern for our residents, which is. Making sure they tell what options there are.
One more observation. Can you go back to the stats? I think it's really telling to keep going back.
Oh, to the other one.
Page forty. Yeah, the numbers that are intriguing to me is we've got the seventy five nineteen. Bottom were the totals of the number requested to the line. Over here, yes, seventy five nineteen. And then we look at how many are the waitlist? That did not get accommodated with thirty two forty five. Now that tell me because it's less than half. If you cycle them every other year, you would get there.
That's a really good point.
So putting them on the waitlist as a repeat. If they get it, they're lucky, but they would be almost guaranteed based on the participation rate of the following year. Yeah, math, the number of the waitlists are still going to get them too.
Yeah, if I if I may interject for for a moment. Um, this data is actually skewed and I and I feel like it's quite significantly skewed because we are only tracking. The number of people who've actually signed up for the waitlist. We are not accounting for the number of people that go to the page. See that there's no longer a dumpster available and close the page. There is a way for us to track that or there should be a way. Uh, and I don't, I I did talk to Pam about, I I don't know if that's something that's been discovered yet as far as. How many unique IP addresses have hit a particular reservation page? Uh, but that would give us an indicator uh much more accurate as to how many people are attempting to get a reservation. But give up when they see that the reservations are full and they don't want to deal with the waitlist because in their mind, oh, I'm never going to get it. The waitlist is just there to appease me.
Good point, Brad. But I but I think I think it's a great point too, but I think there's a way we compensate for that. It's just educating, right? We just have to let them know that here's the program. If you don't put yourself on the waitlist. Even if you put yourself on the waitlist and they and they call you and you say, okay, can't take it this year, that's fine. But to put yourself on the waitlist enables you to be in the cycle. You just have to educate.
Yeah, the center too.
My point though is that it does not, it would not require us to educate anybody to get accurate data. There is a way right now that we, in IT, like I'm in IT, this is what I do. I can literally go, if I'm hosting that website, I can determine how many unique. Addresses or devices have hit this website on a particular page and I can pull that analytical data and put it in this report. And not have to educate a single person. That's my point, is that we're we're missing the mark, but we don't know by how much. Now, by these numbers, yes, it looks great. It looks like we are, we're getting, you know, ninety percent of everybody on a whole, but um. I I think there are some outliers there that if we just go and try to retrieve that data. It would answer that question a little bit more clearly of how accurate and and how how much we are fulfilling. The number of requests without actually requiring somebody to fill in the waitlist.
So to answer your question, Vice Chair Shelton, yes, we can track the IP addresses. Um, what we need to do though is dig in further. So I just need a little bit more time, which I also think will help with. You will all meetings in July. Um, I think the, yeah, the policy has been said, and you are correct, we can hopefully gather exactly what you're talking about. From our website uh provider, Google. Yeah, I mean, right now we can track the IP addresses of those that have reserved or on the waitlist. But we want to dive in to see if we can pull that information of anybody that goes on that I'm.
Curious to see how how these numbers change on this report when we add that column, you know, and and create those averages. Or create those statistics. But yeah, I mean, it's not like we need to list the IP addresses. We just need to count how many unique ones there are and you're. You've basically got your number of who's been attempting to reserve a particular container.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, and and there might be, I'll get in that too, Brad, uh, after I've duplicated.
The IP will be unique. You can do unique IP here.
You can, but. You could have two or three from one family.
Unless they're doing cell phones.
So, yeah, the the only, the household is gonna, your your public IP is what we're going to be able to track. Uh, and and so if somebody is using three different computers in a in a single home, that's going to show up as a single device in theory. Now, if they use their cell phone, yes, that is a separate device for it because it's from a different internet provider. But it still gives us a much more accurate picture. I mean, I don't know how many people are going to be sitting there like, I'll try on one phone, try on another phone. You know, try on my home computer and now hit my hotspot. Sorry.
No, I was just thinking of that, you're using their phones or their other devices or those like me, I'm notorious for going to work and.
Yeah.
See what I need to do today. That might be random scrap.
More to come on that particular data.
But that's a really fascinating to see, Greg. It'll be really interesting. So thank you for bringing that.
Absolutely, thanks.
That'll give us a great idea how much education we need to start really doing. How much more gold we need to make those data. Please, I know where the waitlist.
I think we do have to make that. Well, I think that that we do really, we can make that a key part of it because I didn't get in last year and I didn't put myself on the waitlist. And it's like. Wouldn't have mattered if it struck me. But anyway, I think we just have to really reiterate that people that.
And they hit it in my head even like so once it's put and they go in, I mean, instead of the gold, we we probably need a pop up.
Yeah, oops, sorry, you missed out, but get on the waitlist.
Yeah, yeah, we work on getting top of them.
You can do it before you go, he's like, put on the waitlist, yeah. Great, great idea. I think we're nailing this down and getting it to be really effective program. Not that it wasn't before, but we don't want to end up with features like that.
Amen, yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the scrap or comment? Okay.
Fire suppression.
Okay, fire suppression.
Okay, so uh, last month we talked about how we need to do um repairs for our fire suppression system. That is the truck barn that both were owned and it's occupied right now by Salt Lake County Public Works. Um, so we have some shared costs that I wanted to bring forward to you. Um, the initial quote from our vendor was around forty one thousand dollars. Uh, but I added in a couple thousand just. Into them tools or what have you. Um, and you can see the cost breakout. So. The cost breakout was based on occupancy in that truck barn. So you can see public works operations would have the highest cost of about thirty three thousand. Um, we would have forty seven hundred and then fleet would also have about forty seven hundred. They have some supplies in a. Uh, connect box that's in that facility. Uh, just wanted to let you know we're moving ahead on that one. I thank Renee Plant for giving that contract in place and then Andy King, who's our added manager that also does some part of this. Analysis, putting together the spec. And then if there's no questions on that, I'll move into the cement work at the fuel land. And I don't have a slide for that, but I'm just going to let you know verbally um that we uh. Attempted to do a interval or MOU with Salt Lake County, so we can piggyback on their contract for uh with stalling. To do the cement work out at the the fuel land. Um, but that is not going to work for us, so we will launch an RFP quickly. And get some response of including, we'll do that stalling so that they can deploy. The initial quote on that was about hundred to eighty thousand. Uh, we hope that we can sustain that long enough for RFP and. I'll report back in July. It will take about twenty one days. Sorry, I didn't, I think that was the question last meeting that I didn't have the timeline. So once they start, you know, um, digging up the the asphalt that's there currently. To laying the network, it's about a twenty one day process that has to cure. So um, our teams have the planning place of what to do with those trucks uh in the interim. They can't park it down. We're just doing one side at a time.
Very long gap, folks.
Yeah, so thank you for that approval to move ahead. The cement will be much more sustainable over time.
Roger, you brought it in.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
How long does it take to fill a truck with an actual gas?
Uh, the overnight fuel, um, the only days of work for you.
It it all, it all depends. Um, slow, they're going to get a full thirty, not four by the hour. Um, but to get a pad still, it's forty minutes, but it's, you know, nothing there.
Yeah, so using the four to five hours, you could have someone come in in the middle of the night and rotate vehicles out and put the other ones in. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, we're, we kind of rotate trucks out. And we're we're trying to do that, but deserved. Um, we've been short sat, end of the day. Uh, we had rubber trucks being, rubber trucks on the fuel line. So we actually have employees coming early in the morning to actually rotate uh old trucks.
Yeah, put your desk out there and start.
I'll get my CDL.
Okay, how many gallons go to their trucks, Tony?
Um, these only forty gallons is about. But we're about four thousand GSI of um precious ounces for the trucks. So I don't know, the usually equipped gallons are.
David, you can follow how many gallons our truck tell when we, is one B full of it? Yeah, so these are the equipment, probably around fifty. Yeah, because it's slow.
Slow pressure.
It's slow pressure so that you can fill the tank. The fat is, it's a filler.
Chevron is not filling my car every time I go there.
Maybe.
That fast fill.
With with liquid fuel, yes. With gas.
Oh, we're talking that. Got it, got it. Even in English with fuel, they tell you not to do that. Sorry, I'm getting a little too serious. Okay, anything else?
Not a lot.
All right, properties receipts from tax, no.
And I don't have that information available, but I anticipate for July or August.
Okay. All right. Since we do not need a closed session, is there any other business the board would like to share or question or comment?
I have a question. I have a question about fireworks and trash disposal. Um. I'm a pirate, so I need to know. This is a personal question, okay? But where, so when you light them off. I tell folks and neighbors to dump them in water first and they're just going straight in the trash bin, right? Is there anything they can't put in there that's firework related?
I'm sure that David and Shane who are behind me here.
Hey, could could someone put in, because I've seen people do this. They'll have like a little small firework that they just didn't shoot off during. The fourth or twenty fourth and they'll just throw it away. My guess is that's a bad idea. Okay.
Yeah.
The fuel spill. Yeah.
Yeah, you, good question, yeah. Extinguished, yeah. We don't want bullets. We don't want anything in there that could actually be set up and. And honestly, there was a time where one of the containers on the street got filled with. Like. I don't know how else to say it, but it was like a bomb and it was uh confused, but we didn't know that. So this was years ago. So yeah, it's just amazing when like, fill up. But yes, unused fireworks, do not put in your black can. Maybe take it to fire.
About sparkler that does.
That have the most of the same.
Maybe the tire.
Yeah. Your next door neighbor.
Well, I've seen people put them in there and I go out and then I just light them. No, industry. Yeah. All right.
My apologies for being a compliment to the, the uh, the garbage person's day event. It's really exceptional.
Yeah.
I had a really good chat with Cage, Ryan Loder, and uh, it's great to be able to have those conversations to improve our our scenarios. And one thing immigration wants to do is put lots in our dumpsters to help minimize the amount of valley trash that's coming up. So I just want to say thank you for allowing us to participate and giving us the opportunity to meet with our actual frontline guests. That's really good.
That's terrific.
Appreciate you being able to come. I know you're all busy.
That was a fun event and I I loved seeing the fun that you actually posted. Was her without the graduation cap. She really wanted one without it. But it was fun to do it anyway. So and the graduation music, that was a good time.
And so Renee for the music, the recital, thank you.
Yeah.
Great, and Katarina for organizing Hazel. It was great. We're gonna leave anybody out. At least we tell you because we're H and P roll. Hope we don't leave anybody out. Lisa Kelly, who's our H L payroll. It was well organized. Thank you.
Party plan.
Yeah.
Okay, no other board business? Correct. Uh, request items for the next board meeting on the confirmed rescheduled twenty twenty four, blah, blah, blah. Uh, anything that you want to add to this list? All right, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All of the favor? All of the favor?
Hi.
Thank you all.
So, uh, have a great year. At our, we have seen of this year, we have already been, have come this year. How many, yeah, yes, how many bands have they had?
I'm going to say, uh. A hundred, three hundred.
We have three thousand thirty.
Three thousand thirty.
But it it helps a lot, right?
No.
Take the last for in our party.
Thank you.
Yeah, three thousand. One week, one week, no week.
Did you put a value to it? Do you guys have a pay?
I I can, I.